All right, everyone, we will go ahead and get kicked off tonight. So, welcome to the March 9th meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to cover for those hoping to participate in tonight's meeting. There are no public hearings tonight. However, there will be one opportunity to provide comments in person during the community comment portion of the agenda. So for that, you will be allowed to speak about anything that is not in tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing for up to three minutes. Thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting. We hope there will not be any issues, but be assured we will do our best to continue the meeting as we can if there are any glitches. So I will call tonight's meeting to order, and I will go to Liz for a roll call.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Hayward?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Chair Ignu?
Here. Thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is the approval of our meeting agenda. If I can open that up for a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight's meeting agenda has passed. Next is our approval of meeting minutes. The draft February 9th, 2022 meeting minutes were included in your packet. So I will open it up to discussion or a motion.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of February 9th?
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes from February 9th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those meeting minutes have passed. Next, we move on to our speckle, special recognitions and presentations. So exciting, we have three new Planning Commission members this year. We have Lori Olson, Bonnie Padilla, and Quincy Smith. Quincy Smith is with us here tonight. So, welcome Quincy, and maybe you could even just give us a couple, a little bit of a bio and background of who you are.
Sure, so glad to be here, Quincy Smith. I've been an Edina resident now for about five years. Live in the Ewing and 62nd here in Strackawal Park. I'm so excited to be on the Planning Commission because we get to learn about city government, contribute my background, my experience in business, and hoping that I could really get to know all of the residents and the concerns that they have and ways that I could help. So certainly reach out if you have any questions, but glad to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then at our, maybe at our next meeting, we'll have Lori and Bonnie give a little intro as well when they're able to join us. Okay, next, we have our annual elections. We do this every year. We elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. I should know this, is there an order that we typically go in?
I think it's ours. Whichever order you want. I know I always ask that question too. So your chair, who's vice chair?
We currently do not have one. So Sheila Berube had been in the vice chair role, so vice chair is open. And then Jimmy Bennett is the secretary currently.
Well, I would nominate you to remain as chair.
I will second.
And then, do we make a motion? Or do we say all in favor? Do you have to say that?
I think I do. So all those in favor of approving me as the chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, that passes.
And I would nominate Jimmy as vice chair. I mean...
Oh yeah?
Okay, cool. I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Then...
Do you have a third one?
I'm just going. Lou, you want to get in the order? Or Jerry, whoever?
You sign things, not like this, but you know, just sign things after the meeting.
Unless, yeah, Jerry, whatever.
We have about two or three documents a year to sign.
Yeah. I'd nominate Lou as secretary.
I second.
Wonderful. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so congratulations on new roles. That was very smooth. Thank you, Joanne. So next on our agenda tonight is our community comment. So, let's see. During our community comment portion, we invite residents to share relevant issues or concerns. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. I may limit the number of speakers on the same issue in the interest of time and topic, but generally speaking, items that are elsewhere on tonight's agenda may be addressed during community comment, may not, may not be addressed. So if there is anyone who's interested in providing testimony tonight, please just come up to one of the two podiums, give your full name and address. At that point, the green light on your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you are out of time, the red light will turn on. Is there anyone who would like to provide a community comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next section of the agenda, which is our reports and recommendations. So we have Resolution B 2206 for the 70th and France TIF plan. We have Bill Nundorf here tonight. Bill, whenever you're ready.
Is there a secret?
I'll just use the evidence.
Switch it on.
There you go.
Chair and commissioners, Bill Nundorf, I'm the city's economic development manager. And the topic tonight is Resolution B 2206, which could be Commissioner Miranda's first opportunity to sign a document as the new secretary. Happens every once in a while, and this is potentially one of those times. This resolution has to do with establishing a new tax increment financing district. This would be at the location of the 70th and France redevelopment project, a site that's been talked about since 2019. We've seen four different proposals by two different developer groups, and we're getting close to moving this one forward. So in your packet was a, was both this presentation as well as a staff report that identified the scope of what we're asking this evening, as well as the findings that staff believes justify approving the resolution tonight. So I'll walk through that, go through it fairly quickly, but happy to answer any questions when we're finished this evening. Let's see, none of my buttons are working. Dan, is there a secret? Oh, turning it on, okay, I got it. So as I mentioned, the city is considering creating a new tax increment financing district. This is basically a new district in a defined geographic location that has to do with project financing. Before we create any of these districts, we have to create a TIF plan. There's a lengthy process spelled out in Minnesota statute that we follow, and this is one of the many steps along the way in that process. So before the city council can fully consider the creation of a TIF district later this month, the Planning Commission is asked to opine on whether or not the TIF plan and the project that's within it conforms to the general plans for development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. That's a phrase that comes out of state statute, and so that's basically what is included in the resolution. So what does this mean? Here's a little bit of background for you. So the site, you've seen it before, it's about a six acre parcel at the corner of 70th and France, just south of the Galleria, currently home to a U.S. bank branch. There's two buildings on the property. The first was built in 1975 for the First National Bank of Southdale that eventually became U.S. Bank. The second building was added in 1982 and was an office building, a retail facility, a medical center, a training facility. It's seen many uses. It's been vacant for a few years. We've had both properties inspected to make sure that they qualify with the state's TIF statutes, and we've confirmed that they do. One of the buildings is considered substandard in the eyes of the state law, and that does qualify it for potential tax increment financing. But regarding the Planning Commission's role, we've provided a summary of some of the community vision plans that guide redevelopment of this site as well as other sites in the greater Southdale area. And there's a few plans in particular that are of interest here. The first is the city's comprehensive plan. The second is the Southdale plan that's embedded within the comprehensive plan. And the third is an older plan called the Southeast Edina Redevelopment Plan. That was a plan that goes back to the 80s, I believe. It was last updated in 2012. So different plans approved over different time periods, but they really call on a lot of the same goals and objectives. And I've identified just a few of the top level ones here, but really looking to encourage vibrant nodes and to build a sense of community in some of these locations. Focusing on mixed uses, multimodal transportation options, so not just auto-oriented projects, but places you could walk to or bicycle to. The mixed uses would contain a combination of workspaces and living spaces, and residential development that serves a diverse needs of people in various income levels and various stages of life. The comprehensive plan also talks quite a bit about sustainability. And finally, the comprehensive tax, comprehensive plan talks about retaining and attracting new employment opportunities. So that's very high-level comments. The site plan that's been approved through the rezoning process is shown on the screen here. This is the version, the latest version, it was approved in November of 2021. That was a city council action when they approved the resolution and the related ordinance that governs this site plan. This is PUD number 20. So this, there's a little bit of history here on this one. So while the city council approved the site plan, you might recall that the Planning Commission did not recommend that it be approved. The city council, after holding a public hearing and having additional input, decided to approve it despite your concerns. Renderings of the site plan and the project are shown here. Office building, apartment building, a bank building, and a parking structure to serve them. Internal roadways as well as perimeter roadways that are public. So there's public access, public roads, public parking, public sidewalks, public landscaping, public plazas. And this project, upon completion, could really deliver a number of different public benefits, and that's part of why staff has been talking with the developers about possibly using TIF. This could be one of the first projects to apply the Southdale Design Guidelines and effectively subdivide a large parcel into smaller parcels. It could be the first to comply with the city's new sustainability policy that's quite a bit more aggressive than our past policies. It could be the first Class A office building in Edina in more than two decades. It could be the first in the area to deliver structured parking following a district parking model, something that was talked about in the comprehensive plan as well. And finally, there's a lot of just direct benefits. The impact of the property tax base is enormous. It would increase the tax base there by a factor of 10. So not just doubling it, but tripling it, quadrupling it, a factor of 10. This project would deliver over $1 million in park fees, about $3.3 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and over $2 million into the sewer fund to repair the sewers throughout the area. So while not actually part of the conversation tonight, I'm also asked, what is TIF? Why are we considering TIF? So I have a typical slide that I include. So tax increment financing, as I mentioned, is a financing tool that's allowed in nearly every state in the U.S. It's been allowed here in Minnesota for several decades. It essentially freezes the base level of taxes on the site. So for example, in this, in this chart that they're showing in purple, the property today is valued for tax purposes at just under 15 million. That level of taxation continues to be distributed amongst the city, the schools, and the county. But after the project is finished, it will create a tax capacity of about 185 million. So that area in the yellow or the orange, depending on your screen, is the increment. That's the incremental growth. And so over a period of 15 years, the state law allows us to use those monies to pay for eligible costs, costs that meet the state statute, even further, costs that satisfy the city's more stringent TIF policy about expenses that create a public benefit. So this is a chart of the roadmap, several steps in the process to create a TIF district. We're on step number one. There are several parts of step number one. We've sent the plan to the county for review, we've sent the plan to the school district for review, we've talked with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and we're here with the Planning Commission tonight. TIF in Edina, so there's currently nine active TIF districts in Edina. We've been using this tool since the 1970s. It's how we financed the Edinburgh Park with a mixture of hotel, office, senior housing, and indoor and outdoor park space. It's how we financed in the 80s, the original parking garages at 50th and France. It's how we built Centennial Lakes with the retail, the office, and the homes and the park space there. The site plan here again is focusing more on the area that we're looking at. This is the six acre parcel. There's two parcels there, about 5.7 acres, and this TIF district would last for 15 years. So now to the part that's relevant to you. In Appendix E of the TIF plan, we describe the intended outcomes, the purpose that we're trying to achieve. And Appendix E contains these renderings as well as a narrative which look exactly like the approved plan in PUD number 20. So that's, these are the plans that were approved in the resolution and the ordinances last November. As far as staff findings on why we feel we're justified to find that this complies with the general plans for redevelopment in the city, we looked at that 2012 redevelopment area plan, and some of the high-level goals there I mentioned earlier, increase our property tax value, support multimodal transportation, support mixture of uses, and support business and economic activity. The comprehensive plan has several different land use and economic and housing goals. Some of the highlights are shown here. Land use goal number three is to grow and develop sustainably, to promote energy efficiency. That's something that, with the additional requirements that the city council placed on it to meet the sustainability policy, we think we do that quite well. Land use goal number five, to support a mixture of uses. This project is a very good example of that. Housing, commercial, retail, office, and some outdoor space as well. Housing goal number four is supporting a wide range of housing options. The building that, the apartment building that will be built is market rate. The developer will comply with the city's affordable housing policy by making the $3 million contribution to the housing fund, which would be used for then a different affordable housing project elsewhere in the community. So that's how they're following that policy. From an economic goal, to attract new employment opportunities. In my role as economic development, economic development manager, it's sometimes a challenge to reach out to new businesses, and they ask about what's our new space, what's available, and I say, well, we've got this awesome Class A space. And they ask me, how old is it? I say, well, it was built 25 to 30 years ago. And they tell me that's not Class A, not interested. So by having new Class A space, we think we can attract some new employers and employees to the area. And the final economic goal is encouraging vibrant commercial nodes. This site plan has really been designed to allow day-to-day uses, but also special events. In the planning documents that were submitted, there were renderings where the internal street could be, could be closed for a festival and those types of activities. So all those things are possible. We think that does create the potential for a good amount of vibrancy in the project. And then the last plan is the Greater Southdale District Plan. This was included in the 2020 COP plan. Some of the high-level goals, subdivide these large lots into a more walkable street grid, create public realm spaces that connect spaces with sidewalks and plazas, integrate public art into these spaces, which we've done. And then there's a street room criteria and other principles of design and experience guidelines. And then also transit and bicycling are goals in that Southdale plan, all of which are addressed in this approved site plan. So that's the abbreviated version. In the written report in your packet, there's about a two-page list of additional goals, but they really all lump under these that I summarized. So it's, my recommendation this evening is based on these staff findings. We do recommend that this resolution be approved to confirm that this proposed TIF plan does conform to the general plans of development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We will open it up for questions. Please take one.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Nundorf, I don't know if you could maybe, the one screen that showed previous TIF projects in Edina. Yeah, I guess that would work. These are the active ones, but, and then, I mean, you mentioned historically going back to, was Centennial Lakes like one of the very early ones?
It was, I think the Centennial Lakes dates back to 1984, I believe.
Okay. And I think I remember hearing the summary of how successful and what the return was on, what was invested and what it's turned back. Have there been any disappointments in the use of TIF in the city? I mean, would you say that...
That's a good question. I don't want disappointments, but in the, in the 1990s, we created, they're not shown on this list. The city created three TIF districts in the 1990s that never really did much. We created a TIF district at 44th and France, hoping to attract new investment there. Nothing much ever happened with that, and it was closed. Wooddale and Valley View, similar conversation. We created a TIF district there, hoping to attract new investment. New investment wasn't attracted, so we shut down that TIF district. And then also at 70th and Cahill, same story. There was an Economic Development District created there. The market wasn't ready, we ended up closing down that district. So from my perspective, that was a disappointment, that we couldn't attract that new investment. And in some of those areas, they're still, they're still lagging technically, but none of the districts has been unsuccessful. I've seen other communities where the TIF district has been applied much more aggressively and assertively. Edina is very conservative in how we use TIF, and I've not seen any disappointments here in that regard.
Okay, that was my other one, is that typically, I mean, we're not excessive in using this as a tool, and sometimes these projects have been enormously successful, correct?
Correct, yeah. Right now, about 1% of the city's tax base is included in a TIF district. Many of our neighbors, Bloomington, Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, et cetera, they're up at 8, 9, 10, 13% of their tax base. So when we limit it to about 1%, and that changes every couple of years, but it's a pretty minimal use of tax increment.
Thank you.
Any other questions specifically? Commissioner Olson?
Quick one. To remind me, so is this TIF district tied specifically to that approved development?
It is, yes. The boundaries are only this property. And the subject, the goal, so the subject plan, would be the PUD number 20.
Okay.
That's what we know can be reasonably predicted to happen. Some other communities tend to expand the boundaries and hoping to attract other development elsewhere. Edina is a little bit more strategic about how we use tax increment, so we're limiting it to just this one particular site.
So if the development changed or didn't happen, would you close that TIF district?
It's hard to say. We'd have to really evaluate what is happening at the time. But certainly, if the plan radically changes, like the real construction plan radically changes, we'd have to go back and amend the PUD, we'd have to amend this TIF plan, we have to weigh the merits, is it worth amending, or do you just throw it out and start over a different day? At this point, we're expecting this to move forward, so I haven't really, we'd have to wait and see what happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, please go ahead.
You mentioned like Class A office buildings a lot. Like what are they, what's the benefit of them, and why haven't any been built in like the past 20 years?
Yeah, good question. So most commercial office space is ranked Class A, B, or C. Class A is usually the latest, the latest, I'll say, style. So ceiling heights that are appropriate for the modern era, technology that's built in. So these days with a lot of the new construction, especially in a post-COVID, hopefully, post-COVID environment, the ventilation systems are much different today than they would have been 20 or 30 years ago. The level of amenity today is a lot different than what, that would have happened 20 some years ago. So that Class A space is really the state of the art. Class B is space that used to be Class A, but now is a little bit too old. So the technology has changes, has changed, the Wi-Fi has changed, the wireless has changed, the amenities have changed. Class C space is just old office space. An example in Edina would be the office buildings at 72nd and France. One was an old medical office, and one was just class, just office space, two stories, big surface parking lot, zero amenities, low ceilings, small windows, poorly lit, poorly ventilated. That's classy. And why nothing has been built? I think in the 80s and 90s, there was a big building boom, and in the Twin Cities, they built a lot of office space. It's expensive to build new space, and the biggest challenge in Edina is that we're built out. So in order to build something new, you've got to tear down something old. So in order to build something new, you've got to tear down something old. So just the economics hasn't worked for many years.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Great. Good presentation. Question on the conditions when you use a TIF. So, you know, you kind of mentioned that, you know, we were trying to attract investors. So I'm assuming that no investors wanted to build on that site. But just give me a broad sense of when are the appropriate conditions when a TIF is necessary?
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's a lot of different types of projects. I mean, housing, mixed use, et cetera. So I'll limit my comments to the commercial-type projects, like a mixed-use type project. So this site is one where two different developers have looked at it. The first one studied it hard for about a year and a half, came to this body in this city council on two occasions to bring their plans forward. Ultimately, it scratched the head and walked away. Then it took about a year off and nothing happened. Then a different development group picked it up, ran with the first plan that was pretty high-density. That's the one that had two residential buildings and an office building and a bank. They ran through that process, got the rezoning. The Planning Commission supported that project in the rezoning phase, went to market and found that they couldn't afford to build it. The construction costs were too high, and the rental rate, to be realized, wasn't adequate. So then they came back and downsized the project to make it a little bit easier, to reduce the costs without reducing the quality, which is always a balancing act, and found similar concerns. There's still some high cost to building it, but they think it's a more marketable project. And with the city's goals, I think with the city council, some of their comments, in order to secure that program of the mixed uses, along with splitting the site into four different pads and creating those new internal streets, they felt it was worth the discussion. So staff has been negotiating for the last year and a half to pursue the goal and figure out what the price tag is. So we'll talk, we've spoken with the HRA about what the dollar amounts look like, how that's structured, et cetera. But I think based on the overall compliance with the Southdale Plan, with the general spirit of it, I think there has been an interest to use TIF. We never offer. The developer has to come to us, and in this case, we've scrutinized their budget for a year and a half. So some communities offer TIF, they're desperate for investment. Edina is not desperate for investment. But when we see good investment, that makes sense, we would try to land it here. So those are some of the conditions why we're even having this conversation tonight.
Any, yes, Commissioner Miranda for questions?
Sure, yeah. Is this a, the vote tonight, is this simply a yes/no? Or can we have conditions or change the boundaries or anything like that?
Yeah, good question. So the resolution is a yes/no type of discussion. If you're intent, if you, stop me on that one. If you'd want to add conditions or change the boundaries, I suppose that could be submitted to the city council under advisement. But the state law, the terminology in the state law is what's in the resolution, and that's a yes or no type of language.
Thank you.
All right, I will open it up for comments. Do you have comments?
Sure. So, these are, I've been on the commission three or four years now, and these have come before us before, and I've voted for all of them so far. This one, when we look at the, you know, what staff has identified is the benefits of this compared to what our city planning is, there's certainly a lot in it that meets those goals, you know, for parts of the project, but there seems to be part of the project that doesn't support that. And so that's where I'm having a hard time, and that's why I asked about boundaries. Because, I mean, one thing that's not mentioned in here, I don't think, is that the city recently approved a climate action plan. And that climate action plan calls for reducing vehicle miles traveled, car infrastructure, you know, walkability and stuff. So my concern with this is that, you know, since this is, this project is composed of four quadrants, when it was originally approved, I wasn't so happy with one of the quadrants in the lower left-hand corner of the bank. It didn't really fit in with the rest of it. But I ignored that because I thought the rest of the project was so great. The project has changed, and with the addition of a gigantic parking ramp, I don't see how that fits into our climate action plan, and I don't think it fits into our goals as a city.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Commissioner Olson, did you have them? Any comments?
Just to add, I think it's kind of hard. I'm always in favor of these two, but, you know, I think it's just kind of my, because I was opposed to the changes that they made, so it's hard for me to. But I see what it's doing, and, you know, and I think that that ship has sailed, so. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I just saw you come from, please, Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah, that does sort of seem to throw a wrinkle, the fact that Planning Commission did not, you know, approve the plan that was proceeded onto the city council. But I was not one of those who denied it, so I approved the proposal when it was for the commission before, and I continue. So, yeah, I see no reason not to approve this TIF resolution.
I, I too kind of echo some of the thoughts, and, you know, Commissioner Olson, that entered my mind of, you know, how did my opinions of it back then, how does that play into it now? And so I'm really brought back to what I believe is what we're asked to make the decision on, which is, does this plan, that is, is the part of this report, align to the comprehensive plan? And I appreciated having a lot of the quotes that were within the deck, because I think as Commissioner Miranda stated, there are a lot of parts to the plan, specifically in three quadrants, that I think in many ways, in some ways, does align to the comprehensive plan. I think that there are areas where it doesn't align to the comprehensive plan, though. And I have a couple, I took quotes also of the comprehensive plan. And so on, we had one which was aspiration number nine, which really, you know, was creating that imagination of a transportation in this district. And the quote here is, "Transportation recognizes trends, including autonomous vehicles and a time when parking structures aren't needed for public parking." Within the comprehensive plan, there was also research by CBRE, which cited, really, it was foreseeing the future of retail in 2030 specifically. And the quotation there is, "Personal ownership of vehicles will be reduced dramatically, and fleets of driverless vehicles will reduce the demand for parking." I think that those two really kind of shaped what I was pulling from the comprehensive plan. I know there are, there was a reference to a potential district shared parking facility within key locations. And I think that my understanding of that section of the comprehensive plan was really in reaction to future mass transit needs within that area. However, I don't think that we have built out those needs from a mass transit perspective to necessitate the size and the massing of this parking structure within the area. I think that we also ask for, you know, future-proofing parking, which is maybe, is maybe difficult to do. But I know that one of the instances of that is like a flat slab parking that could be adjusted to other uses, and this, this isn't that. I think that, you know, you did mention, Mr. Newendorf, that there was the possibility of, you know, if this wasn't being used by the development, that it could be sold to the city. But even that kind of suggests to me that there's questions of, is this much parking needed? And so because of all of those reasons, I don't see that this project in totality aligns to what I believe the comprehensive plan is asking for within this area.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, I think the comments pretty much covered a lot of my sentiment, too. Simply, TIF is a mechanism I definitely support, and if I supported this project, I would absolutely support TIF being used in this way to support the project in our community. But the project hasn't changed since I didn't support it for the balance of all the good things and the not-so-pleasant things. And so, from that simple perspective, and you shared a lot of the core reasons to that, I don't support this.
Bill, is this typical to, you know, like, if it's a project that we weren't in favor of? Or have we had something like this before?
Yeah, Carrie's been here longer than I have on that one. No, this is unusual, Madam Chair. It's unusual for staff to come up and present a plan to you that was approved by the council but not approved by you. And it's a challenge. I mean, the Planning Commission is, serves in an advisory capacity to the city council. I can't speak for the city council, but I can review the record and look that they approved the plan and the zoning for it. So that's on the record, that's indisputable. But it's an awkward conversation. That's why I wanted to bring it up and not just sugarcoat it when I started. If I could respond to a couple of your comments about the parking?
Please.
Because it's a, it's a challenge, right? Let's see, I think, I think I have slides. Okay, so, so the parking is definitely the topic that has generated a year and a half of discussion on this project. And, you know, virtually a complete redo of it after it secured its original zoning. So this site plan shows the future public parking. There's also other parking we haven't talked about. In the lower level of the office, there's private parking. In the upper levels of the apartment building, that's private parking for the residents. But when the city gets involved, my interest isn't that private need, it's the, what's available to the public. Site C is on the bottom right of the site. That's the seven or eight-level parking structure, and I think that's the area that has concern. What we know today is one thing, what we might guess in the future is another thing. But today, we know that in order to get financing and to lease office space, people will drive there. People need to drive there. There's about 200,000 square feet of office space in this building. Not every employee is going to work, or is, not every employee is going to live across the street. So we know that's a fact. After talking with leasing brokers, if there's no parking, they're not interested. If this building were downtown Minneapolis, where you've got light rail, oodles of bus transit, lots of people that can live in the North Loop and commute, might be a completely different story. But today, in 2022, the Southdale area is not downtown. It's a suburban auto-oriented space that slowly, step by step, we hope to change and make a little bit less auto-oriented. So that's what we know today. The future is a different question, right? I mean, what are those patterns in the future? Different, futurists have different predictions, and that's, that's part of what we negotiated with the developer. Let's see if I can make this change. So this is kind of weird, but, so this footprint is that Site C parking structure. So on the main level, this is the street level, we did a couple things. We added a very large bicycle room that would be available for use, bike lockers, you know, secure cameras, well-lit, all those kinds of good things. Because we think, we don't know, we think more people are going to bike here in 2024 than would have biked here in 20, or 1994. We're thinking that's what's going to happen, but we still know most people are going to drive. We've been having many conversations with Metro Transit about the E-line. That's slated to come online in 2025. Metro Transit is not budgeting to extend the E-line to serve this site. I've met with them several times, asking them to consider an extension to serve a space further south than Southdale Mall. And right now, it's just not on their radar. So I can hope and wish that we'd have bus rapid transit to this site. Frankly, in the term sheet that we prepared, we negotiated, and the developer reluctantly agreed, to dedicate future transit easements in case at some point in the future, Metro Transit does want to serve this site. We hope they do. But today, in 2022, that's not on their radar. There is the number six bus route that drives by the site and doesn't stop. So same conversation with Metro Transit. You drive right by the site, do you want a bus stop there? Well, there's no one there today, why would the bus stop? So in the TIF packet, we negotiated with the developer to include easements on France and 70th in case Metro Transit changes their mind in the next couple of years. Maybe they will, maybe they won't, but I wanted to make sure we cover that base. And then in the long-distance future, 40, 50 years, whatever it is, the question of autonomous vehicles, do people drive to work? You can have any number of guesses. So, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't include that slide. So one of the things that we included in the agreement, and this is not in the TIF plan, but it's in our terms that the HRA approved with the developer, preliminarily, we still have many steps to go on that one. If at some point, the parking structure is not needed, all the employees in the building teleport in, or they all bicycle in, or they're all marathon runners and they all run in, if at some point in the future that's the case, the city gets the option to purchase the parking garage for a dollar. Because maybe we don't need 540 stalls, maybe we need 40. And a park, or a water treatment center, or a Starbucks, or whatever. But at some point in the future, the city has that right, under the current terms, to buy it for a dollar. So that's how we've kind of future-proofed it. Because as we've talked with more and more leasing agents for the office, they're all happy to talk and forecast about 40 or 50 years down the road, but they know that today, if there's no parking, they won't lease the building. And if they can't lease it, they won't build it. So that's the background about why, why we took the step that we did. So I just wanted to have that available.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson.
What I just said, I really appreciate everything you just said, and everything that you fought to have included. That's just really appreciated. My, just my final statement, though, you were saying that, you know, without the parking, you know, they have to have the parking because they have, how many square feet is it again?
200,000 square feet of office space. This is a big, this is a big building for Edina.
Right. So with that said, though, we're also saying that this is going to be district parking. And I think this slide is good that you've got up. But is that really going to be district parking? be district parking, available for others to use? Or is it all going to be, you know, used by that office building? I know, I mean, you don't, but I'm just saying that we're giving credit for it being district parking, but it really might not be district parking or public parking.
It's so hard to predict the future. But what I, what I do know is that in order to qualify for TIF, to get paid, to get reimbursed for their work, they will have to deliver a public parking easement on the building. So if they don't deliver the easement that secures that legal right to use it for public purposes, they don't get paid. So we feel pretty good about that as well. I still wish I could predict the future, but I can't.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so my recollection, maybe it changed with the city council, but the, this, because it was offered as district parking, it's, it's overparked for that, for that series of buildings, right? I mean, there's more parking than is needed for, for that, correct?
It depends who you ask. I think the parking study that we prepared, that the city prepared, showed that it was overparked. If you asked the leasing agent, they say it's underparked. If you asked the developer, they said this is the right balance. So Carrie, can you opine on that? I think that you had the formal study.
That is correct. I don't recall the exact number, but the parking study that we had did demonstrate that it was overparked.
So, so there are three goals in the Climate Action Plan that are related to this, especially the parking structure. And so the Climate Action Plan has goals for 2030. So these are things that the city wants to accomplish by 2030. And the first one actually dovetails with this because it talks about increasing battery electric vehicle, or EV utilization to 25% of community-wide rolling stock. And I believe there was, there was charging spaces in here and infrastructure for that. So, so it meets that guideline. So that's, so that's great, right? But two other goals related to this were doubling public transit commuter ridership by 2030. I mean, it's very low now, but still doubling is, is a big deal. And clearly, there's no buses going there today. And decreasing community-wide VMT, or vehicles mile traveled by 7% by 2030, which is a very ambitious goal. Okay, actually, all of our goals in the Climate Action Plan are very ambitious, which is why the city council, I think, was so excited about it. And so, you know, this building will take several years, or this area will take several years to build out. So it'll be that much closer to 2030. So I, I feel like it would be easier to justify this as meeting the city's goals if there were the bare minimum parking, or even 10% less than the parking that's required, and they agreed to rent a local surface parking lot and have a little bus that went back and forth at rush hour or something. I mean, something that we could use temporarily, rather than have this huge permanent structure that would clearly be brand new in 2030, you know, very close to it in 2030. So that's why I think it's not really, and even with these things, I appreciate what the city did and what the developer did. But, you know, our goals are very ambitious, and 2030 is a lot closer than you think it is. And I just think this would be kicking off our Climate Action Plan with kind of a kick in the face. So I don't think it meets it at all.
I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the additional context, because I do understand that there are a lot of constraints to this site and to this area and trying to develop both for today and for the future. I think I really, I wouldn't try to predict the future either. I don't think that people will be teleporting there. But I, you know, I don't think anyone's saying that we should be predicting the future. I think that our role as, as the planning commission is really to hold our city to the comprehensive plan that was established. And it was established with community members' input, consultants' input. It was researched, it was studied, and a lot of effort went into establishing this plan. I don't, I don't see this as, you know, predicting the future, but a lot of work went into creating this. And that is, that's what I'm using as my guide tonight of, does this align to the comprehensive plan?
May I ask a question? And this is for Carrie. Is the, is the Climate Action Plan a city plan that guides development? I don't know the answer to that question, but Commissioner Miranda has mentioned it several times. When I did my analysis, I did not look at it as a development plan. But I wonder if you have more context than I have.
It is intended to guide development. It takes effect April 1st, so it's technically not in play right now. But it is intended to help guide those future land use decisions when there's a planned unit development requested, a rezoning, a comprehensive plan amendment. So it is intended to be used as a condition of those types of approvals.
On April 1st.
Correct.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, just a quick question. With the planning study that was done, and it was considered to be overparked, what would be the appropriate amount of parking that would be for this site? This might be for Teague.
Yeah, I would have to look at my staff report to see the, to get the exact numbers. That overage in parking could be considered district parking in stalls that are not needed for the office development. But someone who wanted to park in that ramp, walk the promenade, go to any other uses within that district, that overage is seen as that district parking that could be available anytime. But I can look up in my staff report and get an exact number for you. Give me a couple of minutes.
While Director Teague is looking that up, are there any other questions or comments?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Do we want to wait for?
I found it.
Okay, that was quick.
So these are big numbers because it's based on the total development. So based on all the square footage, they need 1,048 parking stalls. And they were proposing 1,112 stalls. So it's not a big number over, but about 60 stalls over what the code would require.
Director Teague, do you also have not what the code require, but what the parking study recommended was needed?
I believe I do.
While he's looking that up, I'm, I'm thinking for just getting, I don't think we can be dictating now the parking, right? Other than we just feel it doesn't meet the comp plan, right? I think we need to be focused back in on what it is that we're approving. So.
Yes, big picture, you're asked to make a determination if the land use piece of this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The traffic consultant determined that 695 spaces would serve the entire project. So quite a bit less.
Thank you, Director Teague. Thank you again for ridding us into, Commissioner Olson, it looked like you were going to make a motion, but I.
This is so hard. I mean, again, it's just really the, my opinion about the overall development, what was approved. So with that, that's, I would be recommending against approving this resolution. It's a resolution?
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
To be clear. If I might add, we should probably have some findings in that regard. And it can be big picture, like, doesn't meet the goals, goals, it doesn't meet certain goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Doesn't meet certain goals or some goals of the design experience guidelines. And it could be tied to the Climate Action Plan as well. I mean, you know, it is a document that we have been using to still inform projects as we move along. So I would suggest those three.
Can we just say whatever Carrie just said as the reasons? Can I do that? Or do you have to restate them?
I think we understand the intent and can draft that up for Commissioner Miranda to sign.
Go ahead.
I would also suggest, if you're willing to make this a part of your motion, there were a couple of components of the comprehensive plan that I quoted directly. I think those would be relevant to.
Yeah, those were excellent.
Include as well.
And climate plan, action plan.
And just to be clear, the motion is to deny the resolution as it's been presented. So a, a denial of the denial, so I think that, okay.
All right. So all of those in favor of denying this resolution, please say aye.
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 Could we do a roll?
Yes. Do I, can I send that over to Liz to do a roll vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Agnew?
Aye. All right. So I counted six ayes and one nay.
I think it's five, one.
Five to one.
I cannot count. Yes, it is five to one. Thank you. So, Mr. Newendorf, this resolution was denied tonight. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our sketch plan review for 4404 Valley View Road. And Director Teague is giving tonight's presentation.
Live in person without a mask, though, to be able to.
We can understand you.
Yes. Yes. So before you, it was a sketch plan where you are asked to provide the applicant non-binding feedback on a potential future development request. This site is located in the Valley View Wooddale area. It is this site right here. It's currently zoned plan commercial district. It's the old Burley Salon site. It's been vacant for a number of years. Located within the Valley View Wooddale Small Area Plan, again, it's this site right here, suggested for two stories. This was part of the Edina Flats development that was approved back in 2018. So the development along Kellogg has been built out. This site was supposed to be a four-unit condo building, but has never been built and sits vacant today. What the applicant is proposing here is still four units, but it would be a row type townhouse situation. Three of the units would gain access off of Oaklawn and one off of Valley View. So this is kind of a side-by-side comparison of the, the two projects, the one that was approved and one that's proposed. If these row houses look familiar, you may recall last year, this developer proposed a similar type unit up on 46th and France. That ultimately was denied by the city council. But it's that same concept and style of house that's proposed here. So this, this request would require a revised site plan to those Edina, Edina Flats approved plan with a number of variances, again. So this graphic that you see compares the existing zoning standard to the variance that was, that were granted for the condos and what's proposed. So note that the setbacks on Oaklawn and Valley View are a little bit set further back than the previous project. Not a lot, but this is a small site, so every foot counts, really. The west lot line is a little tighter, but that's adjacent to the, the parking lot for the, for the daycare that's next door. So those, those four variances would be needed as part of a formal application. So things to consider and discuss with the planning commission. First, just to touch on density. Again, the density is the same as what was approved for the Edina Flats. This is a gateway into the neighborhood, so there was some discussion with that previous plan. There's that large right-of-way area. This provides an opportunity maybe for a gateway type sign as people travel along Valley View into the district. That's called out in the Small Area Plan. Discussion over those setbacks, whether those are reasonable or not. Landscaping, perhaps maybe additional landscaping along that north lot line to minimize impacts to that neighbor to the north. Also, building materials. So you may recall that we amended the ordinance a couple of years ago within the planned commercial district to talk about, or that requires brick or stone on that main level. So that ordinance applies here. So that might be something worth discussion, should this building be that stone brick. The applicant always has the opportunity to request a variance to those standards. So that's another piece for discussion. So with that, I will stop there. We have, half of the development team is here in the audience, and the other half is on the line to answer any questions, or, I don't know if you've provided a little, a little presentation. But I can stand for questions at this point. Otherwise, the development team is ready to stand by to it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We will, Steve, there's any questions for you directly first, and then we will invite Rebecca up to speak as well. Any questions for Director Teague? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. Yeah, I recall what was approved last time. And I do recall pretty much one of the opportunities that I saw most prominent on this development for the greater good of the area is just the welcome to the area. And I know we talked about that. I guess just what I'm asking you about is what type of, what type of agreement could be in place if it, if it's just as, as little as, as an easement, that, you know, maybe it's just that dedication from the developers enough for then the city to create a sign or some type of welcome versus pinning that all on the developer? What type of options are available and common among other projects like this?
Yep. So yeah, I could, it could happen, it could be a joint, shared cost kind of situation. It could be located within the right-of-way, within that, that public space, and maybe it wouldn't have to be on, on their property. I was speaking with economic development manager earlier today. There may be some funds available from the city through that old TIF district that existed there to potentially pay for a sign. So I think with any formal application, we can explore some of those opportunities that might be out there to provide that signage.
Okay, yeah. And, yeah, well, I'll save comments for then, but thank you.
Any other questions for Director Teague? All right. Well, thank you. I invite you have to speak as well if, if you'd like to, or, yes, please welcome.
But I will say, from the building footprint and the massing, if, I mean, it's just kind of pretty obvious, the two differences there. I think it's a lot more appealing for that entry into Pamela Park. The building footprint itself is going from 6350 square feet. The building footprint itself is going from 6350 square feet to 5,040. So the building footprint on that lot is less. The site hardcover is from 7857 to 7382. What was approved with Edina Flats was actually two and a half stories because of the elevator going up above. So this is literally two-story above grade with a basement. And what I would like to point out is the number of calls that I get weekly from people who are wanting this exact product. There are so many people in our community that are wanting to downsize in-house and in price. But when I say downsize, I just really, in price, I need people to understand the downsizing in price that I'm talking about. The downsizing in price that I'm talking about is they're going from, and we can all think it's ridiculous, but it is just a reality, from 1.8 or 2 million to 1.5, 1.6. In their mind mentally, they just don't want to go up. They're fine selling their 8,000-square-foot home for 2 million, but they don't want to pay more than two and a half. And what's pushing them out of the market here and choosing to look elsewhere for people who have grown up here, lived here, you know, have their families here, is the land prices. And the land prices being what they are, then putting a smaller footprint house on that land is pricing them out of this market. So what I'm telling you and from what I'm hearing as the owner of City Homes and the amount of building that I do in this neighborhood and the amount of people that I have calling, looking for this product and they can't find it. And this is just, it's a huge need in Edina and these people aren't going to look elsewhere. They will find it elsewhere. But, you know, I believe in this product. I'm certified in aging in place and these all will be able to have an elevator in them. It's very important to me to offer this type of product for people. In our environment, we all need, know that there is a huge need out there for this aging population. I know what I need to put in these homes to keep people safe and be able to live in their homes longer. And that's really kind of the goal with these two. And it's keeping them in a community. It's keeping them right by Pamela Park. It's keeping them around young family. So it's a product I really believe in. I hope you guys are, you see the benefit of it too.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, please, Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, Ms. Farnaby, the view that's up there works just fine. As I recall the discussion, what we did approve, so it'd be the view on the left, that was just five feet off the north lot line.
Correct.
And I think I remember that was part of the discussion was, and then two and a half stories was how it was looming over, you know, the first property. So that's alleviated quite a bit by the new proposal because now you have, you mentioned two stories plus a driveway, so.
The other thing is each of these will have two car-attached garages because other plans that we brought forward before, you know, we were doing a parking study and different things like that and people were worried about parking on the street, even else we go to park on the street in the winter in Edina. But these have two car stalls, each with the units themselves that are attached and walking right into the main level.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, but like I said, it's a much different experience with that property immediately to the north, correct? I mean, that's, from what I'm seeing.
I believe so as well.
Yes, good, thank you.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, so will this be, like each unit will be sold with a piece of land? Or is this like a common, shared thing or what?
So I'll have to build it to shell, which will be appealing for the neighbors too. My goal is to build each of them to shell, meaning the exterior walls will be up. I will let then individual selections happen within each of them if they do want to change some walls or do things. I'm wanting it to, for them to be allowed to be able to do that as well. But the actual shell itself will be, will be put. With the amount of calls that I get, I don't, I think it's going to be happening kind of together, but.
Yeah, I guess the point I'm getting at is, sorry, I wasn't clear, is, because right now each unit has two dedicated parking spaces in it. And, you know, if somebody wanted to buy one of these, but they only wanted one parking spot or somebody wanted three or something, was there ever consideration of like a shared parking arrangement? Or you buy into parking or something like that?
There wasn't because I'm wanting these to feel like their own home. It's like the townhome-type situation. The ones in Edina Flats that got the most positive reviews were the bottom units of those three small buildings where it was slab-on-grade parking and they could literally walk right into their unit and not have to see anyone else that, you know, that lived above them. So it's going towards that, you know. One of the limitations with Edina Flats is people struggle with condos with people living above them, some below, but mostly it's what you hear above you. And so this, the way that these would be built, it's not, it's, the common wall is where like the stairs are and stuff. So really trying to minimize and make it feel like their own. So I would be, I think it would reduce the ability or the appealing of this product for, I can't think of the word, but by having open garages like that. And if they only wanted one stall, I mean, I think a lot of people could think of what to do with the other stall, workbenches and different things like that they like to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I opened it up to any comments or feedback, seeing no further questions. Please, Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, so I guess in contrast to the previous discussions we had, like, yeah, we can't predict the future or anything, but it's the whole point of creating a plan. So we have something aspirational that we're aiming for as a city. And I feel this supports where we're aiming for and bringing us toward a positive future. One thing that came up a lot in the development of the comprehensive plan was the missing middle housing. So single-family homes to apartments or condos. There's a whole lot of options in between that aren't here in abundance. And that creates a lack of diversity, lack of variety. Certainly doesn't help achieve some of our goals with the Climate Action Plan, which just allows more people closer to stuff that they would patronize. So, I mean, yeah, we approved four units here before, but this activates those, that land better. I mean, just how they're facing the sidewalk and have stoops kind of to bring people out into the community. Everything about this is, it's just a beneficial product for our city and something I think we should support. The only other comment I'd have is, you know, because it's where you enter Wooddale Valley View, I believe in supporting wayfinding and placemaking and bringing more identity to our places. So if there's some agreement, and looking at the boundaries of the property, it definitely would be outside of the right-of-way. But somewhere on that, you know, the shape that curves out to have some sort of signage welcoming you to Wooddale Valley View, I think would be, you know, a great complement to this. So I don't think that hinges on my approval of this at all, but it'd be nice to try to have the city build something at the same time this gets developed. Thanks.
Commissioner Olson.
I'll just add, I agree, I really like this layout. I like the townhomes that are proposed. I liked them on France too.
Me too.
But, so yeah, I think this is great and it's probably just the graphics, but just, you know, if this moves forward, make sure that that sidewalk continues.
Yep, oh yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's just the graphics.
Just stops. So, and I agree with the wayfinding and, yeah, like, thank you.
Commissioner Miranda.
So, yeah, overall, I agree with the two previous comments and from Commissioners Bennett and Olson. I think this is the kind of housing that we need in Edina and this is a perfect spot for it. But I was kind of alluding to before, I think if we step back a little bit and look at this as part of the whole neighborhood that it is, the node that it is, and look at, you know, just half a mile radius around here. So the city is trying to have more housing for more residents and, but also less than half a mile from here is going to be the E-line, the BRT bus. That's going to go along France. And so somebody who's living in one of these places could walk half a mile or bike half a mile and be on the bus and they could be to Southdale if they worked in Southdale or, I mean, these may be retirees, you know, whatever. Eventually, they won't be retirees and other people will buy these houses. And so because that's so close and in the other direction, it goes to downtown Minneapolis, it goes to Uptown, it goes to the U of M. There could be university professors or student, you know, anyway, I'll get to that later. But it seems like, to my previous comment, the previous thing we talked about in terms of parking, I feel that this would be even better if there were less parking. And I know neighbors will complain that people will park on the street or whatever, but as the applicant mentioned, you can't park on the street in the winter, so it's kind of a non-issue, I think. And then if they are retirees and, you know, if you look at buildings at 50th and France, you see a lot of black windows at night because people are in Arizona or Florida for the winter. You know, so do we need two units of parking for each, for each of these units?
Could I comment on that?
Sure.
The people that I see and that I get calling in, I don't want them walking a half mile because all it takes is one fall and they are deteriorating faster than they ever did before. I want that slab-on-grade. I want it dropped so it's a zero entry for them to go in no step. My whole thing is trying to prevent falls. The last thing that I would be recommending for these people is to walk a half mile on the icy streets and to get to the bus line.
So, I would even be willing to put another unit on this property if we took away some of the parking. And so, and it could even be a variety where like two of the units would have two parking spaces, another three units would have one parking space or something, or a shared parking arrangement or something. And you could do that by, if you move everything five or 10 feet to the east, so it'd be just a little bit closer to the lot line, but that was already approved in the previous application. And then you add a row of trees between, so remove the parking, the driveway on the left and the garage, and you could have another unit there. Because you're moving everything over, you could have a row of trees between them. So it'd be sort of a standalone unit or whatever. I mean, I just think there are creative ways of doing this to increase, I mean, not dramatically increase the density. We're not adding a floor or anything, right? But rearrange it so that there's a little bit less parking, less room for cars, more room for people. And so I think that would make this good project a great project. And then further, if the, because again, we're building it for a certain clientele at this point in time, but in the future, it's going to be sold and somebody else is going to own it. So the city doesn't currently have any ADU regulations, right? So I'm not recommending we do what I'm going to describe because it's illegal. But, you know, because these units have a considerable amount of space in them, 2,800 square feet, and I'm not judging how much space anyone needs or anything, but there could come a point where some of the owners, again, not all of them, might want to rent out, say, the first floor, which is partially below grade?
The first floor, there's a basement, first floor and an upper floor, just like a normal family house with a normal garage.
Right, so if these were designed in such a way where the bottom floor could potentially have a doorway out or something, or some other way of making it independent and structured in such a way that there would be room for one of these bedrooms being a kitchen or something. I mean, you could have somebody who might not be able to afford this by itself, be able to afford it because they want to rent it out to their grandkids or something who are going to the U or, you know, working in Southdale or something. So I'm just thinking in terms of flexibility, in terms of rather than have, you know, because what Edina has now is single-family homes, which are very single-purpose, right? And this is in a node and I think we could be more flexible here. And maybe none of the owners would do that, right? Maybe none of them would rent it out and we'd have to wait until we have an ADU ordinance anyway, but just build in the ability to make it so it's not so expensive to convert it. And I think would make that, you know, would add more people. And again, these people would be more likely to take the bus to go to the U or to Southdale or whatever. So I just think, I think this is a really good project, you know, I do. I think this is a very good project, but I think it could be made even better with some of the tweaks in terms of more room for people, less room for parking.
Thank you. Other commissioners.
Overall, I'll give some feedback too. Overall, I really like kind of how it's broken up a little bit more and it does, I'm sure it won't look like it once we get more of the, like, how does it fit into, kind of, obviously the park is behind that and all of that and a lot of beautiful houses. But this breaks it up a little bit and it doesn't feel as strong of a amassing, which I think really does complement and create that entrance into that residential area, which I really like. I love the amount of like green space and I'm excited to see more of that, I think, come into play. And then I think too, there was some conversation earlier, maybe from Director Teague, about kind of the look and the feel and the guidelines that we have around that. So I would just want to see more of that coming into play. But overall, I feel like this is, this is hitting the mark a lot more than some of the previous proposals or sketch plans that I've seen.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for coming in and I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda tonight is our chair and member comments. So I will open it up to anyone who would like to make any. Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, I don't know, as of late, I've been involved with a number of things that, you know, forces me to linger in the future and think about it. And what I was alluding to on the prior sketch plan review as well as the resolution we denied, you know, it's really the whole purpose of these plans that we're creating in the city. They're not something that should just be ignored because of whatever reason. And to me, they become even more important the more you think forward or the more you see something that contradicts your view of change or whatever. So like you mentioned, you know, these are a collective effort of our citizens, our leaders, professionals, and we really should hold as true to that versus bend at the will of a developer who about 99.9% of the time, the reason why they're here before us is because of the dollar sign. They're not here to save the planet, right? Maybe that's a side effect of what they might be doing. However, as far as all the development proposals that I've seen, you know, they need to make money to make their business operate. And when there's a gap in there, you know, that they need to take a risk on to try to fill and they need our help, especially with TIF. I think those gaps are something important for us to consider helping fill. But if it doesn't align with our plan, it contradicts our goal for the future. And so I'm pleased with the result. And so I, I'm pleased with our results and I think we really do need to hold more truth to our plan because the world's changing around us and we, we created a Climate Action Plan because the world's changing in a way that's not desirable, and we need to do something to accommodate positive change. And that requires us being vigilant as we look forward and incorporating key pieces of infrastructure and land use where we see appropriate to accommodate that. So, I don't know, I, I just feel like I needed to say something regarding that and that project, just building us a parking ramp that's unnecessary sustainably is just a contradiction, right? So, I, I'm sure others had similar takes, but I just feel it's important for us to stick to the plans that we create. And as we look back to the prior comprehensive plan, one big thing was creating these small area plans so we could get consensus around the future of our beloved node. So I think we've done a good job as a community creating these documents and aspirations, and we should stick to them, so, thanks.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, I, I would agree with Commissioner Bennett on this one. I think, um, having a comprehensive plan and us sticking to it and being stewards of that plan is really important. I think, you know, hearing you guys' comments is really what convinced me as well to take the vote that I did. We certainly want development in Edina, we want the city to grow and be thriving, but, you know, we certainly want to take and consider all the feedback that we receive from our constituents and what they want, because everybody agreed to it, and we just have to hold the line on it. Um, I'm hoping that the developers that come forward, you know, don't see it as being a negative, but seeing it as an opportunity to revise and maybe tweak a little bit of their plans and they could re, you know, bring it back again with something that's more in line with the comprehensive plan. And that's kind of why I was like poking a little bit of the, of the parking, uh, piece of it, because if, if they were to make an adjustment there, let's just say, it might be more in line with what we'd expect, and it might be something that'd be more acceptable. So, overall, really good, um, philosophical perspective that I think we should have. Um, and I hope folks who come forward do take the feedback and, and, and see it as an, as an opportunity to get in line with, with, with the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Um, probably a question for Kerry, I, because this was unique, um, our action, you know, on that matter, does, does the City Council, did we kill the project, or does the City Council can proceed without the Planning Commission approve?
They can. They'll have your resolution, um, once we revise it and have Lou sign it. Um, but they'll have that in front of them when they, when they make their decision. And you're right, this is unique, I can't think of a plan that the Planning Commission has not recommended, that there's been TIF involved. Um, yeah, I'm sure this, at least in my time, that's the only one.
I think, I think there's been ones, but.
We've, yeah, we've supported.
Yeah.
And then, and then Kerry, maybe when you, when you make comments, um, projects that we've looked at, and I guess the one on the, the restaurant site on Vernon, if maybe you can address whatever status is there. That'd be, thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Miranda.
Um, yeah, so I, I think, um, great comments that we've had and, and I agree, you know, our, our, our goal is not to prevent development in Edina. I mean, we all want to see a, uh, as Commissioner Smith said, a growing city and a, a city that improves all the time, because what's good now is different from what was good 30 or 40 years ago. And then, okay, moving beyond that, so, uh, a couple of things I just want to mention is, um, and part of the reason why I was mentioning transit and the E-line in, in the previous discussion was, um, here's a quote from, uh, the Met Council about the bus, you know, because transit has been going way down because of COVID, right? And so there was a recent study that was just put out, uh, either yesterday or today, about how it's changed over the past year, and actually is starting to grow back. And what they said is that bus, quote, "Bus Rapid Transit is our most robust fixed route service. With a peak that's about 70% of pre-COVID level, pre-COVID levels, it's shown to be highly resilient and popular with customers along some of our busiest corridors." So, close quote. So, the idea is that we, as a city, you know, we, we virtually fought Minneapolis to get the E-line to come down France instead of going down Xerxes. So I feel like as a city, we have a responsibility to produce as much land use that can take advantage of that as we can, which is why I thought having less park, a little less parking and a little more, um, one more unit in the previous discussion made sense in that particular project. And so, um, plans like the Comprehensive Plan, and all these plans change, right? The Comprehensive Plan is redone every 10 years, it included the Small Area Plans, which were done in the years before that. So our latest plan, which I guess isn't till April 1st, I didn't know, is the, uh, Climate Action Plan. And so the idea is that not so much that it completely overrules previous plans, but it's a, it's a more modern take on the stuff that we want to do as a city. So I think if there's any conflicts between what the Climate Action Plan or any newer plan says and what a previous plan says, we should, I mean, not automatically, but we should weigh more heavily the most recent plan because that's the most recent thing we've done. So, so that's one reason why I was really emphasizing the Climate Action Plan. And then on a completely separate, um, topic, uh, two recent things have brought up the Nine Mile Creek Trail again, and so, um, I took a, I was given a, a tour by Andrew Hayer, who's a Edina resident, and he was a tireless advocate for the Nine Mile Creek Trail. Um, it's frozen now, so, so they're building the trail, they're making the trail go underneath Highway 100 in that culvert, and so, uh, the ground is frozen, so they're, they're doing the construction now. And so we just walked along it and, and everything. And, and it's really turned from something that many residents fought into something that's like the crown jewel of the city, you know? And so, so, so change is good, you know? Things that seem bad or, or some people think are bad might, after you see them installed, turn out to be really good. So, so that's really good. And then, uh, just last week, I had, I was, I'm on the Hennepin Active Transportation Committee, and, uh, Three Rivers Parks gave a presentation, and they included the Nine Mile Creek Trail. Um, and they also talked about how, um, there's a, uh, so the Nine Mile Creek Trail goes sort of north-south in the, in the southwestern portion of the city. That's gonna, there's a plan eventually to connect that all the way up through the northwest suburbs. So there's going to be a, a north-south linear trail near the, the rail line that goes through there, but it's not going to be on the rail line. So, anyway, that's, that's a bigger project that's coming through, and, and so they're starting the planning for that either next year or the year after, for the part that goes through Edina, so. So we've got more things coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Uh, so I was, I was recently appointed to the Hennepin County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Um, and I'm really excited about that work because I think something that doesn't get as much time or attention sometimes is the impact of our, our lived communities and our environments on our mental health. And I don't know, you know, at what point a, a plan would come together, but I think that that's, you know, again, just something when we're leaning into the Climate Action Plan and we're thinking about our lived communities, that that's something that's going to come more and more into play. Um, and so I've only had one meeting, but I'm excited to, to see how that influences some of the work that I do here, um, with you all in the Planning Commission, too. Kerry, let's move on to staff comments.
Yes, thank you, um, Chair members of the Commission. So, we haven't had any items that have gone to City Council, so nothing to report on in terms of council actions. Um, but we have had a few sketch plans, um, as mentioned by Commissioner Strauss, the restaurant site on Vernon. I know the property owners have been considering what should or shouldn't they do on that They haven't submitted any formal applications yet, but I kind of get the feeling that, you know, in considering all the different land uses, they may be leaning towards some type of a restaurant proposal. Um, again, it's a pretty significant ask, rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment. But they did purchase the property, so I would anticipate they'll be before this commission, probably summertime, for whatever they ultimately decide, whether it's housing or, or the restaurant. The Pentagon Park Two, you know, the, the one on 77th, I believe they're getting closer to submitting a formal application, nothing made yet, but just in general conversations I've had with developers, I expect you all to be very busy in the next few months. But nothing formal submitted as of yet, but I think our adjourning at 8:30 may be coming to an end soon. That's it for me.
Thank you, Kerry. I want to build off of something you said about the, the restaurant or whatever might come at that one particular location. I've mentioned the Public Policy Fellows Program that I'm in, and we were talking a lot about ways of in community engagement and how can local governments evolve and improve the ways that they're engaging with local communities. And someone, independent from me, no, no relation, brought up that local site because of the way that they've really evolved it to be, I think, a lot of community input. Um, I think it was like a Facebook ad or something that they had done specifically regarding that site to foster more discussion around what it should be. And so I'm really interested to see if that type of upfront effort evolves the discussion that we have when there's an eventual proposal, and if effective, how that will potentially change the ways that developers are engaging prior to bringing proposals to the, the Planning
That spurred another thought, so, um, Perkins served its last meals since our last meeting, and I, I wanted to bring it up because somehow, I, I mean, I've served on this for six years, and I think of all the contentious projects or the awesome projects or the not-so-great ones, I've heard the most about Perkins closing from everyone around. And, and I think a lot of people dismiss that, it's like, oh, whatever, you know, it's old and, you know, this is going to be better, and that's certainly true in ways, but I think we need to listen, too, because what that offers is, when you think about it, a low-cost place for people to gather from all types of backgrounds. And I think we're definitely seeing, you know, redevelopment occurring that are taking things to different levels that aren't as accessible to the greater community. And is that somewhere we want to exclusively go in Edina? I think most of us wouldn't, so, whether it's, it's not going to be a new Perkins there, but I think we do need to think about maintaining certain opportunities like that in our community, that anyone from outside of Edina would come to go to because they can access it, um, in a, in a different way. So I, I don't know, I'm sure other people have heard about Perkins closing. I, I've just been surprised because I've heard the most about that compared to anything else, so.
All right, I think we can have an adjournment if someone makes a motion to.
It's tradition for our new Commissioner to do that. No, no, you have to, you have to move. You're, you're going to be the one to make the motion. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.